Call the 2020 Annual Meeting of the Hudson School District to order. This time, I'm Jamie Johnson, Board President. Introduce Bruce Hanson, Vice President, Carrie Whitaker, Clerk, Heather Logland, Treasurer, Member Rob Brown, Member Sue Katas, and Member Bob Bowman. And also speaking today will be our Superintendent, Dr. Nick Olet, and our Chief Financial and Operations Officer, Tim Erickson. At this time, I'll turn the meeting over to Dr. Olet, who will handle the nomination election of Chairperson.
All right. All right, can you, Carrie, how does this, I know it's, you've been having trouble. Is this better muffled?
Much better.
That's amazing.
Yeah, well, Dave definitely projects better than I do. Pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 120.08, the Hudson School District, like all common school districts in the state of Wisconsin, is required to hold an annual meeting to allow the district's electors to take action regarding special powers reserved to the electors by the Wisconsin statutes, including but not limited to Wisconsin Statute 120.10. Electors are those residents of the school district who are 18 years of age or older. If there are concerns regarding a resident's status of any, a resident's status of anyone seeking to vote as an elector, please let the chair know, and we will address those concerns as they arise. At this time, it is now time to elect a chairperson for the annual meeting. I will put a call out there, any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Jamie Johnson.
We have one nomination, any other nominations? Any other nominations? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close the nomination process, and with that being said, we'll go ahead and take a voice vote of all the electors present, all those in favor of electing Jamie Johnson as the chairperson for the annual meeting, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. All right, the ayes have it, so Jamie, I will turn it over to you.
And I will turn it back over to you, so you are, I guess, gonna use the podium for providing the school district highlights?
Actually, I'm gonna probably, I'm just going to present from my computer here. I know that with the hundreds of people we have in attendance, they'll still be able to see and hear me as I, as I go through the, the highlights, as we work through this. So if we can put the presentation up on the screen, maybe? It might be a Tim Minor thing. Oh, there we are. Okay, and I'm gonna, as we kinda work through this, I'll just say next slide, please, and then you'll be able to go to the next slide. So as it, as you see, this is our, our district highlights, it's kinda interesting, you know, not that I'm gonna comment on every picture, but as you can see, just how different COVID has made everything when we have people en masse socially distanced and, and spread out and what that process looks like. So just to give a little background on our school district, we are over 830 full-time employees, I believe we sent out over 1,200 W-2s last year, which means full-time and part-time employees. We are the largest employer in St. Craig County. We, this year, welcomed 45 new certified staff members, I think that is our largest, I know it's the largest new staff class we've had since I've been here, but it, it might be one of our largest new, new staff classes, certified staff. And then we've also welcomed three new administrative staff positions, plus we had 34 and counting new support staff positions that we've welcomed. As we talk about the Raider Way, it's, it's kinda surrounded in everything that we do. We want to have, you know, welcoming environment where we have a safe and supportive learning environment. We want to make sure that our students, our staff, and our families are all involved and are constant contributors to what we're trying to do here. The student-centered portion of the Raider Way is just that, we want the students to be the focus of work. This has been extremely evident as we've gone through our COVID planning and everything that is related to that. I think what's interesting, as you can see, this picture was actually just taken last week, and this is Mrs. Kottenbarger, Principal at Rivercrest Elementary, reading to our, to our elementary kids. Even our littlest learners, they're all masked up and, and ready to go. It is always neat to get into the buildings and, and see the different, see the different creative masks that they, they have on. As we look at transforming learning and wanting that continuous improvement piece, there's a couple things that I wanna touch on is, you know, we are, we have our district scorecards, we also have our newly adopted strategic plan. As we continue to push forward and continue to get better, I think there are a lot of districts that would potentially envy where we're at from a standpoint of, you know, our student scores and, and how we, how we perform as a district, both in the classroom, on the athletic fields, in these auditoriums, and in different places. But everybody is constantly striving to get better as we continue to work through that. Our continuous kind of improvement model is, is looking at data and, and tracking it and really trying to make decisions based on what we're, what we're seeing and how it, how it gets better. The culture of excellence is about keeping students' best interests in mind, and, and it is a challenge at times, because there are some times when we have to make decisions that may be what's in the best interest of our kids, but may not necessarily be what's in the best interest of our adults. And, you know, those are, those are kinda competing interests at times, and, and we try to balance those things. But I think one of the things that really does maximize our culture of excellence is the fact that we do have such a student-centered approach here, and that goes from our, our teaching staff to, to our administrative team, all the way to everyone in our, in our support staff. I will say that, the one thing I will say about this picture, and I know I said I wasn't gonna talk about every picture, but this is Dave giving the back-to-school lunch conversation with our new teachers. And it's because that was the day that I happened to go in, because I thought I had a sinus infection. I did have a sinus infection, but however, because my symptoms were related similar to COVID, they made me COVID test, and so then they wouldn't let me go back to work. And it was negative, so everybody is fine, but it was one of those things where it was like, what do you mean I can't go back to work? I'm supposed to talk in about an hour. And they said, no, I'm sorry, you have to wait until you get your results back. And so Dave did a great job filling in, but, and again, I'm sorry, I know I said I wouldn't talk about all the pictures, but I thought some of those were interesting. So our district areas of focus, these have been areas of focus that we worked on, we've been, we've been looking at these things for at least the last three years. They kinda come into alignment with our strategic plan, but really looking at the strong academic achievement at all levels and where our district scorecards tries to measure that at different points and in different areas of our, of our K-12 continuum, or actually 4K-12 continuum, or even you could say early childhood 4K-12 continuum. Preparing students for postgraduate success with life skills, supporting, supportive and inclusive learning environment, and then recruiting, retaining, and supporting quality employees. And I think the, the, the nice thing about this one, and I think it's a point that we try to make with our staff on a regular basis, is that we see that supporting our staff and having a quality staff is as important as what we do in the classrooms, and it's important that we retain them and we record, recruit quality people. And then I think the last piece is, is not unique to the Hudson School District, but it is something that we have gotten a lot of positive feedback on, which is keeping our parents and our community engaged, and that's a big piece of, of what we do, because it seems that no matter how much you communicate, it can never be quite enough communication. So trying to look for different ways in which we can work through that. So as we start to think about some of the district development planning that we've been working on, we have been working on the strategic planning initiative, as we talked about at the last meeting, and it ties back to our leadership development with student education. We have created the School Start Time Advisory Committee, and some of these committees started up, and then COVID hit, and we had to put a pin in them as we worked through it, launched the Hudson's Virtual Charter School, that's been a real success with Dave and his team. Formed the District-wide Family Engagement Committee, really trying to get feedback from, you know, how we can continue to, to engage families. Our Mental Health Advisory Council in, in talking with them about how we can look at the mental health needs of our community, but also our kids. I think one of the things that's a bright spot or a point that I should note is, we had way more people that wanted to be on our Mental Health Advisory Committee than we had spots available. I mean, which was really great, that people wanted to reach out and be, be a part of that. We've done things like the District 30-Day Wellness Challenge that was led by our Human Resources Department, implementation of our, our electronic time systems, and then we did start off by creating a Facility Advisory Committee, Improvement Advisory Committee. However, before we could even meet just once, COVID struck, and so as we've talked about, we talked about the summer, our goal now is to shoot for January is when we're gonna kick that thing off, once we kinda get everything under our belt. But we did, we did go through kinda the facility audit with the architectural firm, and we're in a good spot that way. So as we think about a couple other things that have been a major focus for us, mid-March, our focus shifted to the back to, you know, the COVID situation that we're in, the pandemic situation. We created our back-to, back-to-school blueprint, and, you know, we came up with our guiding principles that's trying to just work through or highlight, you know, what it is that we believe as we make decisions moving forward, because a lot of times people say, why do you make that decision, or why have you come up with that conclusion? And so those guiding principles, which I think are extremely important, and I think just to highlight them, that we do believe in the four As, that, you know, academics, athletics, arts, and activities, you can call it extracurriculars, co-curriculars, curriculars, but we're really, it's, it's really about the well-rounded education for, for all of our kids, and that's important for the well-being of our kids. We do believe in educating the whole child, and we believe that having face-to-face interaction and instruction with, with those kids is the best way to go about it. It's not that we can't do it in, in different ways, but we feel that that is really what we wanna strive for as we work through it. One of the other things that, you know, we've spent a lot of time talking about is not providing opportunities for kids can be detrimental long-term. I've had this conversation, I know we've talked about it at the board table, I've had this conversation with folks in the community, is a lot of times people say, well, Nick, you don't know what the long-term effects of COVID are. I mean, they could be, you know, quite bad on, on heart or, or on a variety of things. And I said, absolutely, and, and COVID is very serious, and it's something that we definitely wanna take serious. But the one thing I do know is, we do know what the long-term effect is on messing up, teaching a kid how to read, because it will have a long-term effect. If we don't do what we need to do with our kids and get them, especially when it comes to teaching kids to read, you'll change their life trajectory forever, you'll change the type of jobs they can have, the colleges they can go to, you'll change potentially their socioeconomic status, you could potentially change who their life partner is and, and who their spouse may be. I mean, all of these things can happen, and so we do know that the long-term effect of, of messing up that process is, is a big deal. And so that's why it's not, again, that we don't think COVID is serious, COVID is, is very serious, it's just, we also know that we have to, we have to look at these other decisions as well and, and do these things. We also know it's our responsibility to mitigate risk to our staff, to our kids, we wanna try to provide as, as safe as an environment as we can without, you know, creating a false sense of safety that we can provide a COVID-free environment, and that's just, that's just not possible. And then I think it's, you know, it is critical that we believe that people follow the protocols that we put in place, both our staff and our parents and our kids. Some of the, some of the things that I think is, is district achievements is it's tied back to summer school, and you'd say, why is summer programming an achievement? Well, when you think about where we were at just three months ago, having kids back in our buildings was a pretty big deal. We had over 570 kids involved in our K-8 Summer Enrichment Classes, another 225 high school students involved in classes this summer, 64 of our, our learners with some of the most challenging needs were able to do the Extended School Year Program to meet their needs. We had 193 kids in our Summer Swim Program, 434 middle and high school students in our Raider Elite, which is our Strength and Conditioning Program, that participated. Our School Edge Care never really closed, I mean, we were offering childcare all the way through the pandemic, and we had an additional 81 high school students involved in our Marching Band Program. And so why I think this is, this is such a, an achievement is, because we were able to do that in a way that we were able to bring kids back, give them some sense of normalcy after being a couple months off, and do that in a manner that was able to keep people safe at the time. And again, interesting with this picture with the young lady with the saxophone, if you notice, our, a lot of our band members were, had special masks that allowed them to wear a mask but still play an instrument. And they, the marching band did an outstanding job this summer, keeping people socially distanced and, and working through that. As we continue to move through our district achievements, we had 180 AP Scholars with Honors and Distinction, along with nine National AP Scholars. That's, that's some of the highest numbers you're gonna find just about anywhere. We were voted again one of the best communities for music and education. Our, our middle school tech ed department, again, last year was considered the Program of the Year, so for the state of Wisconsin. We had some wonderful opportunities as it related to placing second in E-Cyber Mission and STEM Competition with our middle school, where our kids are competing, you can see a picture with our middle school tech ed team there, receiving their award, it was great. We had competition, Geography Bee, the Math Counts, the Spelling Bee, Science Olympiad. If you remember, we had those kids come in and talk to us, and if you remember the, the Spelling Bee, I think somebody asked the, how he began studying for it, and he said he started by reading the dictionary, and it was, it was quite, quite, quite an impressive feat when you're talking to a, a seventh grader, that that's how they're, how they're approaching it. And, and we had some middle, middle school problem solvers, that was great. And so getting to see our kids use problem, critical thinking skills, problem-solving skills is always great. Holton Elementary was a School Health Bronze Award, and, which is about the whole school, whole community, whole child, and what we're doing. Our EP Rock, Hudson Prairie, North Hudson, and Willow were considered outstanding schools as it relates to the Wisconsin School Counselor Association Program of Promise Award, and our very own Sarah Fleer was the Wisconsin School Counselor of the Year for the state of Wisconsin. So that was, that was a great accomplishment, and she was in talking with the board, if you remember, kinda last year, towards the beginning of the year when, once that information came out. As we, as we look ahead to this year, one of the things that, that is constantly driving our discussion or driving what we're doing is, is can we, can we stay in face-to-face instruction, and what does the pandemic bring for us? On the screen right now, you see what's called our School Closure Metric, or Matrix, and it guides our instructional model, and whether or not we're face-to-face, or we're hybrid, virtual, or a combination of both. And we've been very fortunate that the first few weeks of the year, we've been able to stay in Level 1, which is face-to-face five days a week. Right now, barring any major changes, which it doesn't look like there probably will be any, it looks like probably on Wednesday, we'll be able to also make a determination for another two weeks of face-to-face instruction, K-12 coming up. And so, and again, it doesn't mean that we don't have cases in our district, but it just, it means that we're within what we consider reasonable, reasonableness. And I think the last couple items, and I think it's something that we wanna talk about looking ahead, is we're gonna continue our strategic planning, we're gonna be operationalizing that strategic plan and reporting back to the board as to what that means, so that you guys have that information. Equity and inclusion is gonna be a major part of our work. I've had some great conversations with some different folks from around the Midwest to engage in equity conversations, both to look at doing a formal equity audit, both at the desk audit of our materials and policies and, and all of those components, and also then inclusive of focus groups and, and really getting more anecdotal and qualitative information as well, to get a, to get an overall picture of where the district is. So then they, we can work with some different groups, then to create what's kinda almost like a strategic plan within our strategic plan, how are we gonna address equity in our district? And I think it's important for people to understand that equity and inclusion is, is not one of those things that you just do in a month or two months. It's not just something to say, hey, we talked about it, therefore we're done. I mean, it is going to be a journey, as we've had conversations with different folks. It is gonna take, it is gonna take a while for us to, to get to where we wanna be, and we're gonna, we're gonna be starting, I think, relatively quickly, but it does take a while as we work through this, and that's kinda been consistent. I've talked to three different groups at this point, I have another one coming up tomorrow, and that seems to be the common theme, that if you want to do this well, it, it takes a while to do it well versus just saying that we've done it. And so that's, that'll be great, and so I think that'll be part of our process and part of our reports moving forward. And then I think, you know, our School Start Time Committee that resumes here coming up in late fall and winter, and then our Facility Improvement Advisory Committee that resumes just after the first of the year. So that's really kinda where we're heading as a district, and then I think kinda the last slide, really it's just kind of our mantra that we've, we've tried to keep in, at the forefront of what we're doing, this is what we do with our staff shirts and, and everything else, you know, be patient, be kind, keep others in mind. And really, we know that everybody's patience is somewhat frayed as it relates to COVID, and we wanna make sure that we're doing everything we can to, to try to be kind to folks, to try to work to give people the benefit of the doubt as we kinda work through some of these things. But it is a stressful situation, not just at school, but in people's personal lives, so we're working through that. So with that being said, that's kinda where we've been over the course of the year, and then where we're, we're heading this coming year, and there'll be lots more to, to come as the year goes on, as we'll have different presentations at the board meetings. So that's all I have at this point.
All right, is there any questions or comments for our Superintendent from the electors, which includes everyone, I think, everyone in this room right now? I just wanna say, there's a way that us board members could purchase one of those t-shirts, 'cause I'd like to wear it around the house.
And I, and I believe we, I believe we, we do have, we do have some of those shirts, so, yep.
All right. All right. Anyone else?
Did you say you were gonna wear that around the house?
Yeah, just as a reminder to our family.
To remind your wife?
Okay, yeah.
I thought maybe we'd need to get them for your whole family, you know, that you could, you know, kinda as a reminder.
Yeah, whatever. All right. My son takes an extra-large, but, all right. So, all right, thanks for the highlights, it's always great to see our accomplishments over the last year. I mean, we, we get them in, you know, bi-monthly or semi-monthly increments, I should say, and, but to see them total up over the years, it is pretty amazing and very affirming. So next up, I'll turn the mic over to our Board Treasurer, and Heather has a report for the District Financial Overview. You have your choice of the podium or your seat, whichever.
Well, since someone went to all the work of taking...
Put him there, so.
Sure, it makes me look 10 pounds thinner and two inches taller, right? Well, I don't need the height, but, great. Thanks so much, Nick. I appreciate especially you putting the photos in there. Metrics are important when it comes to student performance, when it comes to educator effectiveness, when it comes to money, which is what we're gonna talk about in just a minute, but I think those photos remind us of what it's all about and why we're here, and it's, it's those kids and those staff in our building, so thanks for including those photos. So I'm Heather Logland, and I'm honored to serve as the Treasurer of your Hudson School Board. In just a moment, Chief Financial and Operations Officer, Tim Erickson, is going to present the proposed 2020, 2021 budget for our district. But before he does so, I'd like to take just a few minutes to provide an overview of our financial position. Our annual meeting packet, which if you haven't had a chance to review, I hope you will, I'm sure it's going to be available online as well as here for those of you who are with us, includes more than 25 pages, in fact, I think it's 30-something pages, full of financial information, budgets, pie charts, bar graphs, it even includes a five-page glossary should you come across an unfamiliar term. School financing is complicated, with resources coming from numerous local, state, and federal sources. That said, the biggest chunk of funding in this proposed budget, more than 60%, comes from property taxes. That's right, from all of you, and from me. And I understand that you want to know that your tax dollars are being used well. Providing an excellent experience for all students requires a wide range of investments, from specialized professional development to new curriculum to contracted services to meet all students' needs. Our district is very thoughtful about how it puts its financial resources, including your tax dollars, to work. And I hope that you, like me, not only Board Treasurer, but a taxpayer and a parent of two students in our district, feel proud, not only of the outcomes we are achieving, but of the way that we are managing our financial resources. The good news is that the Hudson School District is in a strong financial position. While there's a lot of information in your 30-something page packet, there are three things that I wanna call out. First, even with almost $2 million of budgeted COVID-19 mitigation expenses, the proposed mil rate is decreasing by 3.57%. What does this mean? It means that while everything else seems to be getting more expensive, the taxes assessed on your property by the district may actually decrease this year. Two, we have a strong fund balance, and we think that's prudent in these uncertain times. Per Board Policy 3121, we strive to have a fund balance equal to 25 to 30% of annual expenditures. The proposed fund balance for this school year is just above that range, and we think this is good planning for our district, given the unknowns with both COVID-19 and state funding. There is still a possibility that our state legislature will pass a budget repair bill this year that would impact this year's budget, which, as a reminder, is already assuming a decrease of $885,000 in equalization aid. And the bill for the next biennium, so for 2021 through 2023, could present some serious challenges. Our district has twice experienced a cut of 10% of state aid, that amounts to about $10 million over a two-year budget cycle, and we want to be sure we're ready for this. The fund balance we have will give us resources to bridge that gap if needed, ensuring that we are continued to be able to continue providing an excellent 4K through 12 experience for all students. The third thing I wanna call your attention to is that we continue to have a significant under levy. So an under levy means that our district is levying less than it is legally allowed to do so. In other words, direct tax relief to folks in our district who own property. In our case, the proposed under levy for this next year is $3.3 million. Last year, we had the largest under levy in the entire state of Wisconsin. Over the past 19 years, our total under levy is more than $125 million. So the mil rate is decreasing, we have strong reserves, and we continue to under levy, all while continuing to provide a great 4K through 12 experience for our kiddos and to attract, retain, and support our talented, dedicated staff. On behalf of your Hudson School Board, I thank you for your continued support of the students and staff of the Hudson School District, and I am pleased to support the recommended 2020, 2021 budget. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Heather, for that report, well done. And next up, we have Tim Erickson, the Chief Financial and Operations Officer.
Thank you. Wanna welcome everyone tonight, if you're viewing my video, that would, that's great too. I just wanna thank, there's a number of people I wanna thank. When we look at this budget process that lasts about six months, there are a lot of different people involved that, that helped in the culmination of this process, so I just wanna thank a number of those different people out there, especially Mark and Tammy in my office that do a lot of the work to help assemble the booklet that you've got right now. So without further ado, I think, you know, jumping into some of our budget challenges, which is gonna be on page seven, well, okay, hold on, I'll just back up. School funding equation. This is a very simplistic view of what the school funding equation looks like. So districts in Wisconsin are under a revenue limit, means they can only raise taxes to a certain amount, and they, and you add state aid in, and that's your revenue limit. So you take the revenue limit, less the state aid that's determined by the state, and then the remaining amount up to that revenue limit is property tax levy. That's the, the most simplistic terms or equation we can get with this. It involves a lot more than that, but just so folks get a little bit of an understanding, and we can jump to the next page, Tim. So we'll cover, in this meeting, we'll cover the proposed budget and levy, the impact on the property taxes, and then we've got some comparison data of the other Wisconsin school districts, and then we'll take questions regarding the proposed budget and levy. So one of the things, when we look at budget challenges, is addressing reduced state funding levels. And what we experience here in Hudson is that... And what we experience, um, here in Hudson is that our property values are growing at a much faster pace almost every year than state average. And that, uh, puts us into what's called a negative tertiary aid. So we have a decreasing amount of state aid and, uh, more of an increasing dependence on the, the local levy to balance that budget when you go back to that simple equation. So, um, that's, that's one of our, one of our challenges more long-term. Um, short-term, in the next one to two years, as, as Heather mentioned, we could even have a budget repair bill this year that would affect this year's budget. Um, the likelihood of that seems to be decreasing a little bit. Uh, but if we look the next couple of years out, so 21 through 23, um, there's a, there's a possibility that we could have, uh, aid reductions from the state, uh, as Heather mentioned in her report. And so those are the things that we need to, to be cognizant of as we move through the budget process and making decisions. Um, again, uh, addressing instructional needs for all learners, uh, maintaining the class sizes within their class size guidelines, and then sustainable funding, uh, of long-term maintenance and capital improvement plans for all facilities. We've got some great facilities here, um, but, uh, you know, many of them are, are aging facilities, and we need to make sure that we keep those up, uh, over the long term. So we'll go to the next page. Budget assumptions, uh, that are built into this budget. Um, our state aid, as, as mentioned before, it's $885,000 less, or 4.1% lower than last year. And if you measure that and, and compare that to consumer price index for the last 12 months, which is one and a half percent, uh, it, it's a, it's a pretty big delta to, to have to make up. The estimated mil rate, uh, of 999 is down about three and a half percent from last year. And overall property tax valuation is estimated to increase, uh, 7.2% this year, uh, compared to, uh, 10% last year. And the state average is five and a half percent. So we continue, uh, to, to really be above those state averages. The under levy, which is the amount of money that could be levied but is not, um, in this budget, uh, stands at about three, three, just under 3.3 million. And that is direct property tax relief for taxpayers. Um, it's important to note that, um, our district has had an under levy and continues to have an under levy. We've had one for several years. Uh, Heather mentioned some cumulative amounts, which we'll, we'll review quickly in, in one of the graphs. But it's, uh, we're kind of an island under ourselves when we compare ourselves to other districts in Wisconsin. Um, the budget also assumes a 1% board-approved increase to salaries and wages, and also includes performance pay structures. Um, this year, we've got a $225,000 levy, uh, proposed for community service, and that's to, to recoup the losses sustained, uh, due to COVID-19. Um, as a footnote, about 72% of schools across the state levy for community services. Uh, this is, this is our, our first time doing that. Uh, under the current version of the budget, we've got COVID-related expenditures, uh, in the budget. And I won't go through all of those, but they total about $1.8 million. And, uh, so we'll, we'll talk about that a little bit later as we get into some of the detail of the budget. So when we look at, um, that detail of the budget, and this, this piece here is on page nine of the book. Uh, we've got a highly summarized piece up on the screen here. But when we look at, uh, our major pieces of funding, which are property taxes, which is the first line of that budget under revenues and equalization aid, uh, two of our biggest pieces of funding, uh, funds the majority of our, of our expenditures. Um, so we've got a 3.3% increase, uh, in that levy for the general fund. And equalization aid, as mentioned before, is going down 4.1%. Uh, federal sources are up, uh, significantly, uh, almost double what they were last year, which, which is good news. Uh, but again, when you look at, uh, the demographics of the district, our, our federal sources wind up to be a half to 1% of our, of our total revenue. Uh, but doesn't, it doesn't contribute much to it. Uh, other districts wind up being higher than that because mo, many of the formulas for federal funding are based on free and reduced lunch count. Um, and that's, uh, that's how the federal funding formulas work. So we're up about a half percent in total revenues. When we look at expenditures, our expenditures for salary and benefits, of course, we're a service organization, so, uh, those are going to be the majority of our budgeted expenditures. Um, they're up 0.4%. Now that's even, even by adding some of the COVID-related expenditures that were on the previous page, uh, we're up only 0.4% there. Um, so that's, it's a very small, small fraction of a percent. When we look at open enrollment out, we're, uh, that number is a little, slightly higher than last year. It's a real general estimate, uh, because final numbers don't come out until later. So we'll, we'll have a better idea as we move into that final budget approval process in October. Uh, most of the other, uh, COVID-related expenditures are in, uh, fun, are in the expenditure lines 300 and 400, so other purchased services and non-capital expenditures. And so, um, the, the reason why those areas are going up so much is due to, due to adding in those, uh, things like dividers and, and different supplies. Uh, going down into the, that bottom line there, so total general fund expenditures is 3%. If we were to take out the COVID-related expenditures of 1.8 million, we're at, uh, a third of a percentage, a third of a percent increase. So almost flat, uh, in our expenditures, uh, if we take out the COVID-related thing, items. Going down to that next section under the general fund surplus, uh, or deficit, um, referring back to 1920, um, so we had, because, due to the closure, we had, uh, we had an underspend of about 5.1 million. Uh, so that would increase our unassigned fund balance by a total of $5.8 million. We intend to take out a little over a million dollars on that next column, over a million 52 in this, this version of the budget. So it would reduce that, uh, that fund balance down. Um, and as Heather had mentioned, you know, as we look out towards the next, the next biennium, uh, that's where we could see some budget reductions. And, you know, we don't know at this point if they'd be significant or not. But this sets us in a position to, to bridge the gap really, and, uh, going forward. So, um, you know, it's a, it's a good, we're in a good, very good spot right now. If we look under the committed and unassigned fund balance summaries, uh, we have, we have dollars for capital projects in at 1.7 million dollars. And those are to fund some of our larger projects that just can't be funded through, solely through operating. Uh, we've got self-funded health insurance balance of 1.9 million. Uh, and incidentally, we've saved cumulatively millions of dollars by going, moving to self-funding. So that's been, uh, that's been a great, uh, piece for us. Uh, projected unassigned fund balance, uh, for 2021 would be 23 million, just over 23 million dollars. So it's about 32%, which is 2.4% above, uh, the boards, uh, the board policy of 25 to 30%. And again, that just sets us in a good spot when we start to move into the next biennium. If you look at that very bottom, that last section at the bottom, the estimated mil rate, uh, is 999. And that's a, that's a 3.57% decrease, uh, over this last year. And we'll go to the next page. The next page is just a representative, um, 20-year snapshot of our aid, uh, membership, which aid membership is what drives the state aid pieces and drives the revenue limits, et cetera, and, and the different formulas that we've got for funding. Um, in the past few years, we've been relatively flat with enrollment. It's gone up and down slightly, but relatively flat. So if we move on to the next page, next page shows the general fund state aid revenue, or, s- since 2014, 15, up to the projected 2020, 2021. And, and that trend line is trending down over time. As we've mentioned, there's been a, there's been a shift in the amount of, uh, percentage of aid versus a percentage of tax levy. So we'll move on to the next page. And so in this, uh, chart here, this is general fund revenues. And you can see federal sources amount for a very, very small piece of the, the total pie of funding for us. And when we look at our, our state sources, uh, at 38%, local sources at 59%. Um, that's where a number of years ago, we were at about a 50/50, uh, ratio there between the two. And moving on to the 2021 proposed budget, now they're, they're changing slightly, uh, but not significantly. So we'll move on to the next page, which has the, the chart for expenditures. Again, you can see the, the expenditures, salaries and benefits are our largest pieces. So they make up about 60, roughly 68%, depending on, uh, which piece you look at. Um, and then purchase services, again, a, a larger piece of that pie at, at 14 to 16%. And then, uh, and then so on. So that gives you a little bit of an idea of how, uh, we spend our money. The next piece really ta, talks about how, um, the impact in levy, uh, is changed with the addition of, uh, of improvements on property. So this first example is, is a change in assessed value, uh, but no change in the levy. And so each property is assessed at $100,000 value. Um, and then that assessment is assumed in the example to go up to 110,000. Uh, if we look at that, each resident, only two homes in this district. So each resident owns 50% of the total property value in the district. In 1920, in 2019 and 2020, the levy is 3,000. So the same for each year. Uh, each residence pays 50% of that total levy, which is $1,500 per residence. In the next example, now we introduce new construction into this. So when there's new construction, um, in this example, we have an assessed value of new construction coming on of $100,000. Uh, after that, so the pie breaks down a little bit differently. So each resident owns 33% of the property value in the Raider Town School District. And the original two residences' shares of the levy has decreased. So, uh, it shows, uh, in the example, this is how that impact of new construction can impact, uh, levies and the impact on, on existing residences. So in this case, the levy per residence goes from the 1,500 for the two residences to $1,000 each for the three residences. Under that table, the table at the very bottom, uh, that gives us what percentage of values, um, of the total valuation in each municipality new construction consists of for 2020. So the city of Hudson is at almost 4%. That's about, it was running about that same level last year. Uh, but prior to that, uh, it was about half that. It was running around 2% for the, for the, uh, for three years previous to last year. So it's fairly significant for the, for the city, uh, to go up that much. Uh, the town of Hudson, again, and the village of North Hudson, um, are higher than the previous few years as well. So we've seen more construction activity and more valuation added, uh, to the, to the district. And if we go to the next page, so the, this has a historical valuation. Again, this page is, is a summary, uh, of the detail that's in the book. And, um, in this case, you can see down at the very bottom of that section of valuation, we're at, uh, just under $5 billion, uh, in a 7.17% increase. And if we look at the percentage change, uh, for the levy, uh, it's, it's 3.37%. Mil rate drops down to 999, and the percentage change, uh, in the mil rate drops down to 3.54%. So, uh, if we look down at the bottom of that section in the, in the book, it gives, it gives a breakdown between each municipality and their valuations and how they've changed. So, um, we have a low in the town of Troy of 4.4% to a high in the village of North Hudson of 11.68%. So we're really, we've seen a pretty wide range of values there, and those things do impact the levy. So when, when the district goes to take the total levy and has to allocate it to each one of those jurisdictions, uh, it does have a different impact depending on if, uh, valuations are going up equally across all municipalities, or if they're going up in more of a striated, uh, fashion here. And if we go to the next page, next page is our balance sheet. And when we look at things such as receivables, there's a $19 million receivable, um, on June 30th of 2020. What that mostly represents is that those are tax receipts. Um, that is not cash that's available for us to spend. Those are tax receipts that are receivable, and, and we'll, we receive those into the following year. So, um, fund balance is, is important to a school district, uh, not only to, to help in times when you have lean times, or, or we may be anticipating that in the next biennium, but also through the course of a normal year where we have, um, you know, we have periods that we go without much funding at all, but all the, all the while, we're incurring expenses. So it's important to have cash flow, uh, to bridge those gaps. Uh, the alternative to that is you go out and you cash flow borrow. So you have to incur borrowing costs, uh, interest expenses. So, um, we, we do not have to do that at this point, um, as we're, we're fortunate and that we don't incur that for, for our taxpayers. So, uh, that's, uh, one more page. Last page is our general, uh, long-term obligation debt here. And you'll see that, that balance at 2021 stands at 108 million. Of course, that was, uh, part of that was our total, uh, referendum for the, the middle school and the high school and the, uh, the auditorium and stadium. And then the payments on that balance, uh, for 2021, uh, will total about $7 million. And that's part of our levy, uh, the board, or the voter-approved levy. And, uh, you can see the, what the levy will be. A levy will be about 7, 7,60,000 on that total. And then if we, uh, jump to the other data, this next chart represents, um, the total educational cost per member and total revenue per member for school districts, uh, taking Hudson on the left column and comparing it to the state average in the middle, and then the CISA 11 average, uh, in the, on the right-hand side. So you can see under total revenue, um, our revenue per member runs 14, is 15,539 for 1819, and that's the latest data that's available from the state. And, um, the, the average for the state was 14,822. So we're a little below that, uh, and a little more below that when we compare ourselves to our CISA 11 average. When we look at the total educational cost per member, um, we're at 14,195, and the state average is 13,757. So we're slightly above that, and, uh, even slightly a little bit more above that when we compare ourselves to our, our CISA 11 average. If we go to the mil rates on the next page, and this, this takes mil rates in comparison to our CISA 11, um, districts. So you can see all the districts down at the bottom. Um, we're at, we were at 1036 last year, and I will be down, down at the 999 level. Um, when that, uh, we'll be able comparatively get that information for next year with all the other districts. But I would, I would guess that we'll probably move down the list a little bit, moving down to that 999, uh, mil rate. And we'll go, move to the next page, Tim. Our under levy, again, this is something that's fairly unique to Hudson. School districts do under levy from time to time. Um, many districts don't do it every single year. Um, and many districts don't do it in the amount that we've done it over the years. So when you look at this chart, the annual under levy is the, is the, is the striped bar. And the cumulative under levy is, is the, uh, the diamond shape, the diamond-shaped bar. And when we look at that, we've under levied cumulatively over, um, since, uh, '03, '04, about $125 million. Um, that's, uh, I would dare guess that's more than any other district in the state, uh, is under levied. Our annual under levy, um, certainly has come down. Part of that's that structural change I talked about in our funding, uh, where we're, we're seeing more of that shift, uh, in the negative tertiary aid going up. Um, and, uh, we, and actually, it's going up from, the under levy for this year's going up from last year's. Last year's was about 2.7 million. Uh, this year's proposal is about 3.3 million. So, um, that under levy is increasing even over last year's. When we look at the next page, that's comparison, that's comparison of, uh, other districts that have an under levy. And we, we just sorted this one at two, at a level of $200,000 or greater, just because there are many levies that are very small amounts. But, uh, so these would be the largest ones. And of course, you can see, um, this is 1819, um, well, 5.1 million, as I mentioned. We're at 2.7, about 2.7 last year, and we're projected to be at 3.3 million this year. So, um, again, when you compare that to other districts, we're, we're So again, when you compare that to other districts, we're far and above, you know, higher and cumulatively much higher than any other district. So go to the next page. Next page is the resolution, and that's been broken apart into the general fund, debt service, and community service fund. And then the next, the last section after that is that section that Heather referred to is for light evening reading if you have insomnia. That's a great place to start, so.
All right. Thanks for the report. Are there any questions of our Chief Financial Officer regarding his report? Hearing none, I'll move into the hearing section of the annual meeting. This would call the hearing open on the proposed budget. So this is a time where anyone can make comment, certainly could ask questions. Going once. Anyone? Going twice. Third call for anyone wishing to speak on the proposed budget. Hearing none, I will now entertain a motion to approve the resolution as specified on page 26. And I think for purpose of the annual meeting, we do need the whole resolution read.
Mr. President.
Heather.
I move to approve the resolution that attacks on the total amount of $49,811,272, $42,525,846 general fund, $7,60,426 debt service fund, $225,000 community services fund, be and is hereby levied against the taxable property in the Hudson School District for school purposes.
Second. All right. We have a motion by Heather, second by Rob. Again, any further comment regarding the resolution as read? Remember Logan pointing out that the three sections, used to be just two. We had the debt service and the general fund, but now we've added the community service included in that total levy amount, and this would be reflective of a levy at $9.99.
Right.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'll call for a voice vote of all electors present. Those in favor of the budget signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed to the budget levy signify by saying nay. The ayes have it, and the budget and levy are approved. I'll now entertain a motion to set the date for the annual meeting for 2021, which is suggested to be the second Monday in September at 7:00 p.m.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I move that we set the date for the 2021 annual meeting for Monday, September 13th, 2021, at 7:00 p.m.
Second.
All right. All those in favor of being here in 364 days say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the meeting is set for September 13th, 2021. At this time, there are other annual meeting powers under the statute that can be brought forward to the body. Remember that happening once in the last seven-plus years, so.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. There's been a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, we are adjourned.